And they like to piggyback on projects, so if it was somehow connected to the kind of the sidewalk system or part of a overall plan.
Probably, we don't have any sidewalks there.
They might, but I mean if it's part of an overall concept to connect.
Well, we have the pedestrian study.
Right, so there's all those pieces that you might be able to put together. I don't know if they've updated it yet, because it was one fifty still type of complications.
So here's the map, so the Patterson Park drives down, this is where you can put in.
Yep.
This is the, that brown is the boardwalk, so it comes around and ties into these two different dry trails that go out, and then the roadway is a trail.
Yeah, so you can kind of really get into it with whatever, get a feeling for.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's great, I'll have to check it out.
Yeah, it's a quick walk.
Yeah, well, where is the sign?
In Patterson, Patterson Environmental Park off of, well, it's by the town rec center. And then it goes across the tracks and goes over to the east branch of the Crook River.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where I put in with the kayak, paddle along down. Is it still not working?
It's on.
Oh, okay. We're live now.
Yeah, we're live, are we, are we, are we ready?
Yes, we're, you're, we're live streaming.
Alright.
Your best behavior.
If you'd like to say.
End time.
I don't know what the rules are, if it's no public comment, but they're in executive session, this is just free time on the stream. No rules. Won't be on the record.
Does anybody want a talent show, if you get up and.
Full song and dance.
Tell a few jokes.
And dim the lights.
Half the audience on YouTube.
Appreciate there's more people in the room than I would have. I don't think, no, I think you're probably right.
I know Vivi does give communications if there are technical issues. So there are people who are trying to listen in and watch, yeah, yeah, who will complain if they don't have picture or don't have something.
It does show the new position of the podium.
Okay. Are you looking at it now?
Yeah. Check, make sure my head wasn't in it.
Should have worn my wig.
Which one?
It's Tuesday, so.
That's the hard choice, right? So many, so many issues.
I'd like to see nineteen seventy-nine Nick wig, if that's the one I want. Flock of seagulls wig. Now, some of the details of the project.
Yeah.
This is on, this is on the agenda. I think a quarter to five in the morning, going down Route twenty-two, pulled out and got coffee at the mobile station. Pulled me over, down twenty-two over the front, so I was going sixty-one in thirty-five zone. I can't believe I was going sixty-one. I just come out of the mobile station and my car doesn't go sixty-one very easily, unbelievable.
On twenty-two?
On Route twenty-two, down, down by, yeah, right, we're at the end, right? So I wasn't at the mobile station anymore, coffee there.
Yeah, at Patterson, yeah.
Yeah, made a right, and he pulled me over just before he got sixty-four, is that right-hand turn, that kind of takes you before it spreads out. That's where he pulled me over, and I was like, where were you? You know, because I, I couldn't, I don't think I was going that fast.
They love to just hang out there, because everyone's used to, northbound is really bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Because everyone's used to going sixty-five, seventy miles an hour, and then it goes down to thirty-five.
We're coming off, going sixty-five, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And I just was shaking, I'm like, I can't, I can't imagine, like, you sure you got the right car? It's like, sorry, you days off to a bad start. No, you're not. Oh, yeah, yeah, because you can plead no guilty, I will, I know, I know the show will.
My son got so many speeding tickets.
Lower it to something else.
Yeah, exactly, plead to it on the charge.
Yeah, always plead no guilty. Teach you, father should teach you, you're not guilty, don't talk to no cops.
I had no idea that there was that routine thing now that is just expected that if you get a speeding ticket or another moving violation, if you, you can plead to another lesser one.
Yeah, and you don't even have to, I mean, they just tell you, they come to you and say, oh, I can do this.
I remember that, because my son got like six tickets in two years.
Yeah.
He like learned the system, I'm like, really, I had no idea, I haven't had a speeding ticket since I was in my twenties.
The first time I ever experienced it was, um, it was the, the detective, it was called a leap in the pavement, I was making a right-hand turn in what's not really a right-hand turn lane, but it's a lane that everybody uses for right-hand turns. And I decided I would.
I thought you were leaving the pavement, because you were up on two wheels, turning so fast.
Right. No, 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 no. And you get there, and then the cop people, usually they're taking everybody one by one, and usually, you know, lowering it from a, whatever is twenty over to ten over, and save your point or something. And you go through, and like, you couldn't lower them, I don't know, there's nothing less, I'm like, well. What, what you want, they just drop it altogether, how about that?
Let them give me a no inspection or something.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what he did, they ended up giving me a, I know, a seatbelt, which is hysterical, because then you go in front of a judge and you lie. Spire, it's a lie. It's like conspiracy. Yeah, yeah.
I was going to.
It's encouraged.
Yeah, yeah.
It's encouraged.
You're an attorney, right? What are we saying wrong here?
No, that's the, the justice system.
Justice system.
That's right. It's not about fair or right, it's about legal.
Yeah. See, well, I think the speeding ticket stuff, it's just, it's just a money maker, I'll write the check, that's about that. Here's the money, it's just the points. I don't think I've been, been this one too, and I don't remember me last time I had a ticket, it's been a very long time, many years. I don't tell the stories, like, it sounds like I take it all the time, but I don't. Who are you?
Were you guys here last month?
I, last month I missed, I just watched a videotape.
Oh, you did?
And, uh.
You've been and danced.
That's like one of the, that I didn't see, though, I've been here for most of, for the last year. But I mean, I've either read the minutes or watched the recordings, or listened to the recordings, or both. But you might watch those, so, hold on. Thought you'd done, oh, I see, I think you done went to Benson's last time. We're trying, we are trying. It's the church next door, right? It's not, it's not the executive session.
Pretty rowdy up there.
Standing on the table.
Yeah, yeah. That's why it's taking so long, they're working on the numbers.
Are there apartments above that, over there?
That must be fun.
Laura, haven't been to one of these meetings for a while for the planning board, is there usually a public comment session as there is for the zoning board meetings?
Only if you're at, if there's a public hearing. Do you have public comment at any zoning board meeting?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Same thing, it seems like it's only if it's a public hearing.
It's only if you have a public hearing, or, yeah.
Although I've seen public comment spontaneously break out at some of these, and then they.
Well, I think the, the village board and another town board, they usually have.
We have a public comment, yeah.
Public comment for a period.
But not at planning and zoning.
Correct.
There's only Facebook for unfettered public comment.
It disappeared. I thought that I remember seeing it, and then today I was like, wait, it was something in there.
That was actually, I think, about a month ago, that one.
Yeah.
Bring a copy.
Should have both sounded working here. Some believing, uh, friend. It was two, two years ago, and someone went by that place, and they're like, yeah, that was it.
Yeah, because there's some, the answer's something that, I had to say, association of the plague and transmission or something.
No, you were, I think you had, you were doing something for, actually for the, for something for, to the, to the hockey.
Yeah. Well, I wa, I was, yeah, yeah.
Put together the little, the bits when they show what just happened kind of thing, yeah, yeah.
Exactly. I was doing highlights and promos for hockey back when, before NBC, I did those hole bruises. Yeah, I did that for, gosh, close three years at one point, I think it took us a place there. I was remembering that, so.
It was fun, though.
It was, hockey's fun to watch live, I'm not a big hockey fan, but it came very high. There's tremendous amount of skill, I mean, I don't, I don't follow it, but I'm just working on it. Tip of that stick, man, just moving that puck fast in a walk.
I have a high school friend who, I don't know how it works, but he puts up hockey players, the majors, you know, like majors prospects, and they're, they're staying, and he's their college kids. So he's gotten to know a bunch of them, but he was telling me about going to them, he got to the beach one day, and it was the two hockey players, candidate family, his son plays lacrosse, and his other friend plays lacrosse, seriously, played lacrosse. And he played a lot of lacrosse, stopped at the beach, and the two hockey kids were there, in college.
Still snowing?
Never played lacrosse, never.
I didn't notice.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're working on the main, is what I was like, I didn't see anything.
As good as the kids who play their whole lives.
Looking for the flashing light.
These are, this is amazing, they're just, I guess that's, it's that level, the skill. But yeah, big on that, we went to, went to a Rangers game, though, with him, which was funny, because he's got access to go to whatever it was, community or something, where they have food.
What time you have there?
The hockey players, the hockey players come there.
So it's fifty-seven. When did they go up?
Be saying about our. Hockey is that, they're like normal people, I think versus like football player, or basketball player, even baseball players, it's like, you walk into a room and you know, the hockey guys, like, full size. Regular humans and their children, too, I'm like. Of course, that's the other thing.
Laura, are the restrooms upstairs open?
The restaurant upstairs open?
Restroom.
Oh, restroom, yes, I thought you said restaurant, I'm like, what, a restaurant upstairs?
You'd like a steak, you could grab one.
You'd have a steak.
I'll just give you the exact address, you're going in.
A little DMV would make a nice counter service.
That's gonna be our meeting room.
That's the reason why you can't have counter service at your meeting, might encourage more.
Snacks?
We could, I think serving some drinks would be a good idea.
I think drinks and snacks down here would be really.
I think that'd be fantastic idea. Yeah, so that's gonna be your meeting room upstairs?
Yeah, that's the plan.
That makes sense. Will this be part of the village hall, or is it?
Well, what I'd like to do is rent this.
Yeah.
So that we can recoup, because when the DMV moved out, we lost that rent.
Sure.
But.
We really have to fire separate everything.
But we also need a bathroom. Below this sewer line down.
You're right. Yeah, is the DMV still open in, in, uh, Millbrook?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Five days a week up there now, or are they?
I thought they were closing a lot of the satellite ones, um, and apparently just us.
Just us? They were closing the mall, but.
Yeah, we're closing the mall.
First.
Okay, distance from us.
Yes, it's a shame, because I mean, it was well-used.
It was, it was. It was opposite Millbrook, so we were Tuesday, Thursday, they were Monday, Wednesday.
Right. Right, so you could get to the DMV if you had to.
That was the one you could get in and get out, versus Brewster or Poughkeepsie, of course, now it's all by appointment, so you can get in and get out.
Yeah.
Which actually is good, I haven't done that yet, but yeah, my wife did, I said, oh, wow, that's.
I'm hoping they, I'm hoping they keep that, I mean, that, that became during COVID, and hopefully it's something that they stick with, because I think it works. Yeah, this being, I mean, this was an old firehouse, this was a truck bay.
Right. Right.
So it's just long and skinny, it's not the best for meetings. That's a nice square one up there, we get rid of the counter and everything, and soccer, your snack bar will be removed.
No. Yes. Well, it's nice.
It would encourage more, uh, participation, more people coming in the meetings, if you had a little espresso bar or something.
Concession stand, yeah.
Cocktails.
I was, yeah, espresso. Manhattan?
Yes.
But you really go for that.
Right.
Not just beer and wine, you're just.
No, come on, it'd be top notch here.
Sleep problem, big government.
What's that?
Follow your lead.
You mind if I look at that, uh?
Yeah, okay. Except for the speeding ticket, I won't look at that. Oh, boy.
Does, you know, does the Hacks one have a bathroom?
They do.
They do. We can get one back there for this space, or?
It's a strange configuration, that there. So this door can cross over to their door. And then there's a door that goes in and goes back to where the sheriffs.
Oh, there's no back there, okay.
So there used to be a bathroom back there, but it was torn out.
Yeah. Right.
So now it's back in and everything, and then it would have to be like tiny, so then we would be needing ADA, how we get an ADA.
Thank you.
So that's what's really gonna help.
But you guys are still here, still here.
We have to wake up, you know?
Well, you went home? It's snowing now, you went home?
I see this chair is still.
Oh, is that the one shrinking? Well, this one's shrinking, and it's.
See if I get shorter.
Try to move them around, so it's always a surprise.
You have to get some heat up there, too, because I could just beat the ground.
Yeah, it is a little chilly.
Alright, gang's all here, um. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to close the executive session.
Thank you, uh, make a session.
Check.
More favor?
Just keep going.
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, Kurt.
Kurt.
Let's do it.
Alright, let's. Okay. Kurt Johnson G Group Designs, here at the half of Main Corner Properties. So, hopefully you've had the chance to kind of review the latest submission on the architectural portion of this. Um, okay, so maybe I can just run through the latest and greatest quickly, if that's what you'd like me to do, or?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, what, uh, the order is proposing now is to just go through the, I opened the November first, uh, letter. Number one would be to, uh, clad the existing chimney that's currently brick, in a stone veneer, uh, real stone veneer. Uh, something that we can ideally would complement the roof color, have some warm tones in it, and go from there, and I think that that would. Those pieces, if we can select a stone, um, you know, that's the route that the board would like to pursue, I can actually, we have trouble getting actual stone samples from Montrup Brothers, these are photographs from their showroom, but I think if we could hone in on something, if that's the way we want to go. Get an actual bit of the stone here so we can look at, and I think that'll inform a lot of the other things that we might be able to talk about, in terms of either painting the brick, or some of the change in the color of the building itself. Uh, because I think they all need to tie together, the, the stone would be the dictation of kind of the other things, because paint and it's easy to kind of match, color match, given the tone, but anyway, so that's number one. Is plating the chimney in natural stone veneer, um, and then again, covering the, uh, like on the south end of the building here, which we had trim details in the approved design, would actually be going over the brick that's, uh, showing now, with the trim material here, to get more of the look, and here at the front entrance of what was approved. Uh, the signage here would be the same idea, would, would take the stone from the chimney here and put it on the stone pillars that are here, uh, just to tie those together. No change with the windows, those will be basically for the approved plans on those. Proposing now, actually, because this stone, the brick wall, the half wall that's here on the second floor right now, that's kind of structurally tied into a slab that was poured there, so there's rebar and everything that comes into there, so the idea here is to actually cover the existing brick with trim detail on the second floor here, and do the same thing on the lower level here. and do the same thing on the lower level here to cover the brick on those half walls. And bring that more into a, uh, a trim detail. Uh, again, adding columns for the approved, previously approved plan in here to give that more heft. Let's see, is that, again, the roof color. We're proposing to keep the roof color as it is right now, um, and then try to tie in the other pieces to that. Shutters will be installed for the original plans. Cedar pergola will be removed that sits on top of this right now, we're gonna inset that down into this band that's there now, so you don't see it sitting on top of that structure. Let's see, what, okay, so this existing wall here has travertine stone tile on it right now. So it's proposed to remove that and put the siding and shutters on that, as was previously approved, and also on this elevation here. So the stones that's on the second floor would all be removed, put the siding that's on the second story of the building right now in its place. Down on the lower level, we would leave the travertine, cause it's in shadow underneath that outdoor dining area. And again, on the north end of the bu- building, we'll have a railing system here that'll be similar to the railing system on the front entry. So we find the H V A C units are on that roof. And, uh, the last item was, uh, working on possibly painting the building, uh, getting rid of that tote color, maybe going more of a white off white.
Right. I'll I'll pick a D M V stone.
It it's probably about three inches of stone, but it's natural stone, it's not a, a product of, a manufactured product, but it's real stone.
When we met up there, um, in the summer, early summer, we took a walk through. The idea of painting the roof tile was very much, we had samples and told us you get color match and everything, how come that's just gone?
We did have, what we brought to that meeting was that actually just with a Benjamin Moore paint, just a color, just to see it painted. It, that wasn't the proper product. We did find a product that you could apply to this roof, it's a elastomeric product that would work on there and it's, it's black. That's, you can't really choose colors, it's pure black. And it's just a function of, um, that's not where the owners want to go right now, but, um, and I just think it's, it's a matter of kind of getting the paint up underneath the way it's applied underneath those tiles because of shadow line and getting it underneath, and it's all gonna have the proper coating on that.
Sure, I could imagine just because of the type of product it is, you're gonna get heating, it's like it's gonna shrink and swell and it's gonna flash.
And possibly gonna then see like terracotta showing through as it moves. So I think the idea, we stepped away from that, actually, when we got a product that would work, but it's just, logistically, it may not work that well.
And what type of product is it?
It it's got, it's kind of like a rubber, rubberized paint product, coating product. It has some thickness to it, but I think application of it, it would be very tricky to do that. And again, with the expansion contraction of that material, I'm afraid that you're gonna see maybe some flashing, you know, some movement in that and actually see the terracotta coming through as it shrinks.
I just had one question about the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
How you have the overhangs listed, so you have the balcony porch on there, so to speak, there's the overhang in the front, there's the overhang on the north.
Yep.
And then there's the overhang, which is the porch.
Correct.
Basically, right?
Yep.
Cause there is yard requirements, ninety-eight eighteen, where it doesn't allow, no balcony should project into a required yard.
Yeah, they they do not. The only one that is in the yard, basically, is over here, well, actually, that was all on, that's this footprint here. This is all, we got all our variances that were basically on that. The building didn't change from, with the overhangs. The only one that got slightly larger was the one that went to the front, but we're completely within the building above.
One to the north doesn't project, well, they're allowed, well, as corners can levered roofs can't project more than two feet into a required yard. And then no balconies.
Yeah, but the side yard, it's over, it's, it's over here, our variances we got were on the front yard here. This is the side yard way up here.
There was a side yard variance too, I think?
No, we were.
Just a front yard variance?
Yeah, we were only in this front area, this red line here, it's maybe hard to see, but that's the allowable building envelope here. So we got our variances along the front yard inside that. So we're complying with the others. And those were on the site plan.
Alright, I just wasn't sure how that, uh, how that factored into it, I just wanted to make sure that was, was addressed anyway. Alright, um. Karen, I'm gonna let you start.
Oh, boy.
Nah, I can, I can if you want, you know. We're still looking at this building that we're having a tough time, like how it fits in. You know, a lot of the decision-making process throughout the whole thing was based on that original approval and the cases you made for how this building fit and how it fit into the community. You know, the character, just the, the look of the building and, you know, the sheer size. It is still, oh no, it is a residential district that this, this building is in. And it went from looking like a very large possible residential building to a very large commercial building. And it's just, we're having a tough time seeing how that's, how that still fits.
It just, it's, it seems like the big issue right now, everything else pretty much is going back to what was approved. Fairly close, it's the roof color, I think is the big item that is kind of material of that roof.
And the brick.
And the brick, but, but again, we're not seeing, we're not gonna see a whole lot.
There really is not that much brick left on the building.
We're kind of covering a lot of it and also if we can get away from the brick color and maybe make it more, pick a gr- a warm gray that's in the stone, I think it will tie together and feel less brick-like.
Without looking commercial, I mean, that's where.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and stuff, and again, you know, getting it to look of, to get off of that commercial look of the building is, you know, is paramount for this project.
Mm-hmm.
It's a very large building for a lot, for one, was there, what is it, twenty percent of the size of the building for that size lot? Is the coverage of the building alone is supposed to be?
Um, yeah, maybe, yeah. Oh, my coverage, building coverage is twenty percent, yeah.
And what is it right now?
Um, actually, building coverage is sixteen percent. It was fifteen percent, now it's sixteen percent. So the footprint really isn't that much different from what was there.
I mean, we're not certainly gonna shrink the building, that's for sure.
No.
You know, you did reference the Kane House, you referenced the house that's, was on, uh, South Street.
Mm-hmm.
You know. Uh, and the original site plan did look a little bit more, as you know, as Rob, Robert said, you know, a little bit more, uh, residential compared to, uh, compared to the way it looks right now.
I think the paint color, personally, I think the paint color will help. And I think the shutters on the windows, the muttons in the window, which are not there now, I think that's gonna help, start breaking the building down a little bit. Getting rid of those patterns that are in the brick that are apparent, I think will help that also by, cause those will all go away with what's being proposed right now. You won't see the patterning in the brick, so it'll all be, number one, a uniform color, and you won't have the patterns in the brick.
If you're putting brick, if you're putting stone on the chimney, why can't you put stone on the rest of the building?
I think it's just a function of, the chimney footing is oversized, the s- size of the footing that's there now, so it'd be going over the brick. On the rest of the building, I think the way that that's, the ledge was, that brick is sitting on the ledge, so the stone would be kind of like hanging on nothing. It has nothing to sit on or connect to at that point.
Well, Hojos and White Plains is an elsewhere to go, I don't like looking at Hojos, okay?
I think there has, I mean, I don't wanna speak for a lot of people, I mean, if the roof is there, I think we've kind of gotten a chance to get a look at that. And I think it's, it's kind of polarizing, but I think I have heard from a lot of people that they actually like the roof very much.
It's people I heard from the right by there.
But do, when they, when they say they like it, do they say because it fits into the neighborhood?
I don't think it has that provision with it, I think it's just like, we see the building and we like the roof the way it is. And it just, a lot of it's opinion.
Yes, it's subjective opinion.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a qualified right or wrong answer per se, but the only thing about that is that we do have, we do have an opinion from the village architect that it doesn't fit, so I don't think that's subjective, that's an, that's an expert saying that.
Yeah, say it's subjective opinion. Get your chance to speak Ben, we're gonna, can do this orderly tonight. We have a chance, come up speak, we'll let you speak, you wanna be interrupted. Well, let's give Kurt a chance right now.
I mean, it is nobody, even if you're a architectural expert, it, there is an element of subjectivity to that. Some people like modern architecture, some people like traditional architecture, not saying one's right, one's wrong, it's just, there's, there's an opinion there.
Sure, there is an opinion, but it, but the, the issue is conformance with the master plan and the community character. And that, you know, is something that, we have something that's not subjective, which is an opinion from somebody who looked at the master plan, who worked with Duani and, so I, I, you know, yeah.
Yeah, and I try to go back to one of Duani's, I think, best statements, as he said, for new construction was, he would dare you to say where the new begins and the old starts, or vice versa. The old starts, new begins, like it should be seamless, like he said, it's like a, it's like a quilt, it should be seamless between the new construction and the old construction. That is not really a seamless looking building based on, you know, the community, uh, and the character that surrounding buildings in that area you have. I mean, you couldn't have laid a better case when, when you presented the building the first time, the references to the Kane House and Durkin's building down the street.
I mean, and I still think we're going that, I mean, we have the traditional double hung windows, we have the shutters on that, we have the columns, we have some n- natural materials we're putting in here. So I think we still have those elements, I mean, a lot of times, you know, there's nothing that prevents a homeowner in that area from painting their house purple. You know, it's like, there are things that.
But, but again, you, you, your approval was premised on you saying, this is gonna be like the Kane House. You used all these historical references, which was great, because that's exactly what the master plan says. Now to come back and say, well, we can do painted purple, that, that's not where we're at.
I'm not saying we can paint it purple, but.
No, no, but I'm just saying, but it's really kind of a, that's kind of a non sequitur to talk about that, because you, the situation we have here is, you, you presented something to the village, you made promises to, not you, but the applicant made promises to the village, and they didn't keep them. And then, and now it doesn't, in the opinion of our architect, it doesn't fit in now with the building models that you said it would. And that's the, that's one of the issues here. And I, I just don't think it's, you know, talking about what opinion and opinion, we're, we're talking about, you know, something that we've had an expert look at it and they ca- came forward with a lot of concerns about it not fitting in, so. I mean, I will say that I've gone through the master plan, uh, recently in a lot of detail, there's probably a dozen references to, to these kinds of issues about meshing and weaving into the community and that the, you know, fitting, especially outside the village core, you know, having, having, you know, models, you know, looking at the models of the houses and, and they talk about materials, they talk about, you know, all, all these things and that's, again, that's, that's the issue that we're looking at, so.
Alright, so I, I think.
So I mean, is there, is there any kind of distillation that the board has on kind of where we are right now and what, where to go from here?
I, I think we've, you know, based on all those things and all the changes, you know, to the, the site plan from the original, originally approved site plan, there's enough that I still think we're gonna have to rescind the negative deck at this point and just look at all of those things again. Like a lot of these things were not considered the first time around. There's enough change with this project from the originally approved site plan to now. Like the cumulative nature of all of those things is still enough for us to have to go back and, you know, look at Seeker again. I mean, I know you've done a lot of work trying to get the building back to where it was and there's still, like I said, there's a lot of things outside of even just that, that should be looked at again. And I think, you know, Seeker does need to, it's an information gathering process, Seeker, in order for us to make determinations on a project. And there is a lot of information on there that was not considered the first time.
It, I could just, I was like, other than the roof, what are the other?
Well, the site plan itself, like you went and redid the site plan.
It's fairly minor.
Well, there was a lot of things on there that weren't, that were there now, that weren't there on the original site plan, like there has been light poles moved, we're still talking about screening.
They're going, they're being removed, they're being put where they belong.
Back where they were in the original site plan, from where they are right now.
Yes.
I don't think getting a, debating.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, there's a.
No, but I'm just, I'm just trying to get in order of magnitude here of just like, what constitutes the large changes? I mean, the site plan change, the loss of one parking space.
Cumulative, well, there's, there's a lot of things that were cumulatively different from the, the original site plan. A- and we're still falling into the community character aspect of this, there's, it's enough, it's enough for us to look at Seeker again, or at least, yeah. It's enough to rescind it, go ahead Dave.
I mean, this is a presentation by him, it's not a, it's not a Q and A to the board, so.
Alright. That's the only way things get accomplished, is by having a conversation between the applicant and the board. Alright, we're gonna, you'll get your chance, Ben. No, I'm gonna represent the applicant, you can't just shut me down. I'm not shutting you down, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to speak. I'm engaging in this conversation. Well, then you, you should come up here and address yourself and engage in the conversation, but please ask if you would like, we're still in the middle of a discussion here ourselves.
Are you done Kurt?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, well, why don't you, if you, if, if the lawyer has something to say, let him come up and say it.
Would you like to hear it?
Get up at the podium and say your piece.
First of all, you all got my letter that it's unlawful to rescind the negative declaration, and it's not necessary to do so.
Recced acknowledged.
Pardon me?
Recede acknowledged, that'll be in the record.
Oh, it's, alright, let's, okay, go ahead Ben. You don't need to rescind the negative, that, number one, it's unlawful, but number two, it doesn't accomplish anything. And number three, you're already in a seeker process on this current application. If you wanna look at the changes from the last time, you just do it in the context of this application and the seeker review on this application. There's not, there's nothing to do with the neg deck on the prior application, that application is over, it's already been approved. We have a new application now and a new seeker process. I'm not saying you can't engage in a seeker review, I'm just saying you can't rescind a negative declaration on an old application. But we, we can't really respond to the board's concerns unless we have a list of what it is that the board's concerns are and these cumulative changes you're talking about. We can't respond to that unless we really know what they are. And I think we're entitled to get that from the board. We, I think we have many times, we've gone over all the changes that you've made, like we've asked you to submit a new site plan, like he's identified the things that were different, that had been built, that were on the site compared to what was approved on the site plan. And our current proposal in terms of the site plan is what, one additional parking space.
We're losing one.
We're losing a space. I think that's it. And then on the building, we're basically going back to what had been approved, other than the roof. Right, I mean, what, what else is there? No, I'm not gonna, no. Well, no, it's not a back and forth, we're trying to get information from the board. I mean, how can we respond to the board's concerns if we don't know what they are? I think we've expressed our concerns. Kurt, do you understand what the, what the issues are here?
I, personally, it's just like, in an effort just to move it forward, it'd be nice to go through the list and to say, okay, this we can work with, know that we can't, we have issues with this still, but this one we can take off the tables, you know, it's, just to be able to kind of get it down to, you know, a few items, if that's what it is, so we can really focus on those.
I know, I think we've been doing that for like nine months or so, like we've been doing this a long time and we finally got a site plan from you guys.
Really, seeker has to, needs to be done.
Ten months, yeah.
Okay, that, that process should move forward and, and just for the record, I've, I've given the board an opinion that, that we disagree with your interpretation and, you know, it's not, this is a, this, when you modify a site plan application, the board has every right to look at the cumulative impact of the entire project and.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
Well, then, then, then it, it really is academic then, what you, whether you rescind or not.
No, it's not, rescission creates delay, unnecessary delay. Plus it's not authorized by the state regulations.
You're talking about thirty days and.
No, we're talking about sixty days, under your scenario, from that resolution from last, from last month.
The, the, we disagree, we disagree with your opinion Ben, and that's, and I've communicated that to the. The, the, we disagree, we disagree with your opinion, Ben, and that's, and I've communicated that to the, to the planning board and advise them that they're, you're free to take a vote on. If you determine that there may be a significant adverse environmental impact, you, it's within your authority to, to pass a motion to rescind the, the negative declaration, in which case there'll be a thirty-day circulation to involve the agencies. The applicant will have an opportunity to respond, and then after that time period has expired, you can then, you can then reconsider and, and determine whether your determination is the same at that point, so... And there was a motion, there was a motion that was...
I believe the board all saw my letter.
I did see your letter, and I disagree with you also, actually, that we can't rescind seeker, so I don't think it's unlawful that we're doing that.
And what, what's the basis for that?
Don't, don't answer that.
Seeker regulations say you can rescind a neg deck prior...
This is not productive, Ben. We're not gonna get into it. You wrote your letter, we read your letter carefully, we've done research, and we disagree, and that's it.
Have you do additional research, Dave, after receiving my letter?
Yes.
And what did you find that counteracts that law?
I'm not gonna engage in any further discussion about this.
I think I'm entitled to know what your legal analysis is.
No, you're not.
No?
No. I, I just told you that it was because of the cumulative impact. There's case law in support of that.
Not in sort of, not in support of rescinding a neg deck.
Yes, there is.
You're allowed to consider cumulative impact.
This, you, by modifying the site plan...
In the context of this seeker review.
Hold on, you, you asked him for an answer. He's gonna give you an answer. Well, you interrupted him before he was gonna give you, you're not liking his answer, actually. I think it's what it boils down to. You're just gonna disagree with whatever his answer is.
My, my primary disagreement is that the board is just exalting form and procedure over substance. Rescinding a neg deck, going through this sixty-day delay process, it doesn't help the board get more information. It doesn't help the board at all. It doesn't help the applicant at all. You know him, right?
Oh, I don't know, but that we, it still should be circulated to the involved agencies, in which case they have to weigh in, so we can't make a decision if without hearing from them.
Only with the decision of the neg deck do you have to circulate to involved agencies.
I've given you my opinion, I've given you the rationale, you know, in the executive session, and, and I, and, you know, you can decide what you wanna do at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I know.
It's productive to have a legal debate.
You've made your case, Ben.
At any board meeting.
Respectfully disagree with you.
Okay, you're gonna do what your lawyer says. He's wrong, but you'll do what he says, but let's schedule a public hearing. Let's get the public in here so we can see what they have to say about it.
We're going to. There is gonna be a public hearing scheduled for this. Excuse me?
Let's hold a public hearing next month.
There's no, there's gonna be one. I don't see why we would hold one now. Like, we, there is gonna be a public hearing scheduled for this.
Well, you want more information to hold a hearing.
Why would I wanna do it prematurely?
Let's get, let's hear, let's see what the public has to say.
Rob, this is not a debate, Rob.
We will. When do you think that hearing will be held?
Don't answer that.
We're just on a delay, we're just on a delay pattern here.
We'll take that under advisement. We'll take all your questions.
Yeah, you are. We bet.
Really, but maybe you're not trying to.
Let him continue with the meeting in a rational manner. This has become irrational. I recognize that you wanna move the application forward. In fact, we all do. We want to be done with this, okay? So let him continue. You said your piece. He's already told you that he's going to schedule a public hearing. Please don't, do not badger us, okay? We're just trying to get through this meeting at this point.
Well, I'm sorry, but you're not.
Well, you're not helping, so please stop, okay? Let him continue. He's leading the meeting.
Passing this resolution will just cause delay. It won't help you all get through this. It will just delay getting through.
Can I, can I just say, Rob, before you, you do not have to respond. Well, your comments at this point, Ben, will be taken under advisement. I would advise you not to respond to any more of his questions, because we'll, we will respond, but not, not right now, because it's not productive.
Yeah, we're just going in circles, I think, at this point, Ben.
Let's, let's get, I mean, we know where we wanna go, so let's, let's get there.
All right. Well, I'm gonna make the motion to rescind the negative deck for this application.
I'll second the motion.
And is that the motion, is it the, the resolution that was read into the record at the last meeting?
Yes. We got a second. Viv, can you take a roll?
He's got a second, listen, maybe do a roll.
There's only discussion first. We don't have a discussion on this.
Uh, I would like to just add a little bit here, so in terms of the reasons for a rescission, there are three: changes proposed for the project, new information discovered, or changes in circumstances related to the project arise that were not previously considered, and the lead agency determines that a significant adverse environmental impact may result. From the conversation I've heard over the last several months, it seems to me that there are concerns about community character, uh, consistency with community character and consistency with community plan. And just to run through some questions that, um, seeker helps us to better understand the project by, any potential adverse impacts. Consistency with community plans, proposed actions, land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. Um, let's see. The proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations. The proposed action may replace or eliminate, let's see, uh... The proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character. So those kind of fit with what you guys have said over the past several weeks, months. And so I just kind of wanted to help frame this conversation a little. Again, the reasons that you can rescind a neg deck are, changes are proposed for the project, new information is discovered, or there are changes in circumstances that the lead agency determines may have a significant adverse environmental impact. That's all.
Thank you, thanks, Karen. That, that, that sums it up. I mean, we've been discussing this for the past nine months.
Right.
We all know how, 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 how this project deviated from the original site plan approval to where we are right now. Does not fit into the character or neighborhood whatsoever.
Viv, can you take a roll?
Mike Mercand?
Aye.
Pete Finelli?
Aye.
Lundy Sella?
Aye.
Rob Dister?
Aye. All right, we're gonna be circulating it, and we'll give you guys, uh, a reasonable opportunity to respond.
How many days?
How many days is that, thirty?
Yeah, the resolution says thirty days.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other business tonight, Viv?
Um, just the schedule, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Yes.
I think so.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, good night, Kurt.
Thanks, Kurt.
Um, Espro?
Um, Espro?
Do we have anything, uh?
Kurt, did you... Kurt?
Is there a suitable budget for continuing?
Um...
Is the budget left for this project?
We just...
That's probably covering expenses you already have.
Um, no, well, no, there, it, I know there's some things that are on there, but everything right now is, um, is done, is paid out.
Okay, okay, good, so it gives you some bonus.
Yeah.
All right, any, no other, is there any Espro keys?
No.
All right. Is there anything else?
You call a copy? You use it upstairs?
Oh, I'm gonna need yours, 'cause yours is in, in, um, of one thirty-sixty Main Street, I'm gonna need your copy.
You want this?
Yes.
And that whole package?
The whole thing. Do you want mine? I don't have enough, so. You'll move.
I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, if that's it, Espro's the last thing.
Yeah, you can do all that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, thank you.
Want you a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.